Remember when your girls were there?
No.
Is that amazing?
You're gonna like starting one.
We're waiting for Bradley. Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting for Monday, March 14, 2016, to order, please. Roll call.
Vandy Creek here.
Anderson here.
Penland here.
Lauka here.
Williams here. Barb Halron is excused this evening, and sitting on the front table tonight is Paul Tronsen. Going, uh, doing our, he's the candidate on the school board, for the school board election this next April, so he's, uh, invited him to sit up here to get some training with us on the new computers and everything, so. We have a quorum, so please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Um, can you motion to adopt the agenda?
So, most.
Second.
You're gonna motion the second. All in favor of motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion passes four zero. Just so everybody knows, we're new computers tonight, so you gotta bear with us a little bit, so we understand what was going on here, so. Uh, tonight, we have citizens and our delegations. First of all, uh, is there anybody here this evening that'd like to speak to anything that's not on the agenda? Anything that's not on the agenda? Okay, we'll move on to F two, Board Member Recognition. As of tonight, uh, this is a, a sad night for us as a school board. Uh, we are, um, here tonight to, uh, honor one of our own school board members that's been with us for over fifteen years, and this is our last meeting, so, um, on behalf of the school board, Ginny, uh, I would like to present you with our school bell as a outgoing member of the school board, and it's, for many years, as, um, I've been on the school board, Ginny's been on here the longest with me, and, uh, I really appreciate everything she's done for the board and the district. She's been an outstanding board member, and I can't thank her enough, so.
Thank you much.
Want to say anything?
I kinda spoke in December. Um, I thought about giving you guys a whole lecture tonight, and I thought, ah, no sermons. I just wanna say thank you. Thank you very much for the opportunity to learn and grow and serve, and it's been an honor. Thank you.
Okay, uh, we'll move on to number three. Thanks, Ginny. Bright Lights Presentation. Valley View highlights?
Yep, um, we have two, uh, second graders that are going to talk to you tonight. Need help with their computers, or pretty much anything they need, I'm sure they could help you with that as well. But I'll turn it over to one of our staff members, uh, Mr. Mobergh.
Alright, good. Thank you, uh, board members, district administrative team. As Kurt said, we have the, uh, proud privilege to introduce, uh, Grace Nissvatchel and Janet Freese to share with us, uh, some of the highlights from Valley View so far in this school year. So, I will turn it over to them.
Oh, well, this is our school year. Makerspace. At Valley View in the LMC Library Media Center, about every month, we have a Makerspace event. Makerspace is where we take out the old hot glue gun, cardboard, egg cartons, and everything else you couldn't think of. Lately, it's been with LEDs and felt. Every year at the March Makerspace events, they make up their own carnival games for our annual school spring carnival.
The Valley View School Store. The Valley View School Store is a mini-market run by teachers and students. In the middle of January, students start to lose, break, or run out of school supplies. The school store sells various school supplies priced between fifteen cents and one dollar. Students are discouraged from bringing more than five dollars to school.
The Valley View School Song. We are Valley View heroes. Valley View is who we are. We rule all with beautiful rules. We protect ourselves and others too. We're responsible and caring. Be safe with all we do. We are each our own heroes. It's a different way. We're proud to be the Valley View Valley View!
Destination Imagination. Destination Imagination, AKA DI, is an organization run by volunteers, that has different, different challenges each year. There is a structural, structural, technical, scientific, improv, project outreach, and Rising Stars challenge. There are three levels: elementary, middle, and secondary. The Rising Stars are for the first and second graders.
Coding and Gaming. At Valley View, we have an after-school program called Coding and Gaming. Game design, and specifically video game design, is an important area of study for today's students. It allows them to bring together problem-solving, creativity, and critical thinking to create games for themselves and others. Video game design also adds elements of graphic design, learning-specific video game design platforms, and computer coding. This is Valley View's Coding and Gaming Team.
Robotics. At Valley View, we had thirty kids on eight different teams working each week on vexed IQ robots that are designed to play a game called Bank Shot. Robots had to score as many points as possible in one minute by collecting as many orange balls as possible and putting them in a scoring zone. One of our teams even brought home a first-place trophy in December. Above are some of the students on the Valley View Robotics Team. To the left is a picture of some of the robots that the robotics team made, and below that is a picture of the robotics team at a tournament.
Olympic Assembly. On February nineteenth, Valley View had a special guest. Her name was Debbie Sullivan, and she was a three-time USA Olympic walker in nineteen ninety-two, nineteen ninety-six, and two thousand. When she came to Valley View, she talked to the students about following their dreams and believing in themselves. When she was in third grade, her dream someday was to be in the Olympics, but her friends did not believe in her. Here are pictures of Debbie Sullivan talking to Valley View students, and a picture of her fast-walking with a student.
A couple of weeks ago, the first graders went on a field trip to see a play at the Fox Valley Performing Arts Center. They saw the play Moon Mouse. They also had fancy day, and they all dressed up very nicely.
Read Across America. Dr. Seuss's great accomplishments are very much acknowledged at Valley View. Students and teachers celebrate Dr. Seuss's love and passion for reading during Read Across America Week, which is also the week of his birthday. What is Read Across America? Read Across America is an initiative on re- reading created by the National Education Association. Students and staff will celebrate throughout the week by wearing stripes, dressing up as their favorite Dr. Seuss character, wear their favorite hat, wear pajamas, reading and writing storms, choosing a book from Riff, and even listen to the guest readers read Dr. Seuss books. These are students picking up Riff reading his fun books. To the right is our guidance council reading to students. These are kids that wore costumes during Read Across America Week.
Who is that kid in the middle on the pine?
Thank you, girls.
These are kids that are reading during a reading storm during Read Across America Week. They are also wearing their pajamas.
Senior Volunteers. We have about thirty-five senior volunteers that are scheduled to one or more classrooms at Valley View to do activities with students. The weekly volunteers help with writing, reading, and math with our students. Senior volunteers are the wonderful holiday guest readers in December, and the Dr. Seuss readers in March. These are the senior volunteers reading to students during Read Across America Week.
Concerts at Valley View. Valley View students put on a lot of concerts and performances each year. Third grader's a Dr. Seuss-themed concert with skits from famous Dr. Seuss books. Fourth grader, fourth grade does an America-themed concert and sings songs that your grandkids like. First grade does a friendly concert. Last year, they did Let It Go from The Lorax. Second grade does a friendly, friendly and confidence booster concert. This year, they did You Got a Friend in Me from Toy Story. These are fourth and fifth graders doing their performances.
Google Hangout. Fifth grade has started something new on the computer. This year, the fifth graders have been going on the computers and video chatting with people from other cities and states. When the students are video chat, video chatting, they have to guess where the other students are and vice versa.
Here's a video of some fourth graders on a virtual field trip. Our technology coordinator, Jamie Aberbeck, is the person that helped the fourth graders get the Google, was the fourth grade teachers get the Google video chat with these two men that work at the public, at the Nell Public Museum.
This has never been done before from the Nell. This is exotic too. That's a field trip.
Yeah, crazy school. Crazy.
Are we good to go?
Yeah, I think, uh, looks like we're ready to get started.
Let's hang out.
Yeah, welcome back, everybody, or I guess we should say, we're welcome back to your classroom. Uh, my name is Ryan again. This is Kevin. You saw him a couple months ago, and, um, that was when we talked to you the first time, and he's back in action today, so. Uh, we've got some really cool stuff to show you. Uh, your teachers may have talked to you about what we're doing already, if they haven't. Our theme for this month is technology through time. And as we were thinking about the kinds of things we wanted to show you, we tried to think of a theme, what kind of technology could we show you? Because the museum is just absolutely full of technology. So, to get started here, what I wanna do is have maybe one from each classroom come up and tell us what you think technology is. Give me a definition of what, what is technology. Let's start with.
These, these are the students from every grade level at Valley View that won the zine or blows their handwriting contest.
City X. Just starting a couple weeks ago, the Valley View fifth graders have been doing City X. City X is a part of three D printing. We use Tinkercad, a computer software program that lets you design what you want to three D print. In the activity at school, we pick a card that gives you a topic on what you design.
The Carnival. Every year, we have a spring carnival. We have silent auctions, arcade games, an art show, food, prizes, and much more. There's even an event where we put whipped cream in the principal's faces, or we duct tape them to the wall. All Valley View students have lots of fun.
And that is the end of our presentation.
Any questions for the girls? Good job. Thank you for coming this evening. Thanks. Okay, next we got, uh, AMPA presentation from Rhonda.
It's gonna be hard to follow that presentation. Okay, so, my name is Rhonda Richlin. I am a Spanish teacher at Valley View, but my other role is a supportive mom of three kids in the music program in the Schwab and School District. I have one at Parkview, and then I have two, um, students at high school right now, one in the band program and one in the choir program. I'd also like to introduce Jill P. Rock.
And I'm the current president of AMPA. I joined AMPA a couple of years ago, and I just wanted to give back because my, well, especially my older daughter Jenna's so involved in music at the high school, and she's a senior this year, so I just couldn't imagine her high school life without music, so. And she had one, you know, gotten a few scholarships through AMPA for summer programs, so I, it was just my way of giving back. And as president this year, one of our goals was to come up with a, um, website that could kinda consolidate all the music sites out there currently from all the teachers. There's like five of them, and they're really usually not up to date too much, so. Thankfully, Rhonda kinda stepped in and headed this up and came up with a website, um, for the Schwab and School District Music Program. So that's kinda what we want to talk to you about today.
Um, so that's my reason for joining AMPA, to the Schwab and Music Parent Association. Uh, I wanted to give back to the program that my kids love so much, um, and try to build the communication and the publicity for the, for the music program, K-12. So what we did is, we kind of consolidated and worked collaboratively with all the directors in the district, getting their thoughts and ideas of what they wanted on the, on the website, and what we wanted as AMPA as well. So we met, um, a couple times with the directors, um, emailed a lot, and, um, tried to consolidate everything that they wanted on here, so. Right now, we have a music calendar that we try to add, um, the teachers can add to it throughout the school year of all the events that are occurring, fundraisers, concerts, um, other things that need to be brought up, parent, parent-teacher conferences. We also have a Facebook page. I don't know, this kinda cuts it off a little bit, but, um, if you haven't liked our Schwab and School District Music Program, right now, we have about seventy likes, and I try to update it when important events are occurring. Just this past weekend, I'm not sure if you were aware, that many of our students at Parkview and the high school participated in this, um, district solo and ensemble fest- festival at Westapure High School. We had a total of two hundred and twenty separate events that the kids participated in. Many of these children, um, participated in more than one event. It ranged from Class A, which is, um, well, let me backtrack. It ranges from Class C all the way to Class A. Uh, if you place at a one star, these students go to state, which is going to happen at UW-Green Bay on May seventh, May sixth and seventh. And we had about, well, more or less. I lost count after a while. Uh, we had around seventy-five or more Class A participants, and of those, over half of them are going to state, um, which is wonderful. The, some of the main events that are going are Jaguar Jazz at the high school, Encore, the Magical Choir, some triple trios, double trios, solos, percussion ensembles, the men octet, ladies barber shop, and so on. We also had a couple Parkview Middle School students that are also going, um, to state, which is wonderful, um, at that grade level. So, um, what we did is, we went to K five, there, um, no, this has just been out for about a month, so we're still adding to it, but there's a concert coming up for Cormier, that's, um, Tom and Stewart Concert this week on Thursday. So we added some of the information on that. If you go to Valley View, you can click on Directors. It tells you about the winter musical, spring musical, Tonsham Choir, and grade-level concerts that, um, happened recently. The middle school, we have special announcements on here, um, for music tryouts, or instrument placement. Course descriptions. This is also good for open enrollees and potential open enrollees that are looking at our district to see what kind of classes we offer, um, at the various schools. You can scroll down here. Description of band and choir, and guitar classes and those things like that. Band, we have just, um, biographies on the teachers, if you want a little bit of background on their experience. Goes for choir as well. Concert attire that should all be, the kids will have to purchase later on. We also have information for solo ensemble, and what I did is I posted, um, what do you call them, the schedules for, for the students. I just took off their first name and just put the initial and then their last name. So parents could go to other performances and know when other kids are performing, which was great, and several of them did stop in. The high school, we also have course descriptions on here. Um, this is just the general one, but if you click on each of the tabs here, it provides a more detailed description of each of the classes offered. Scroll up here a little bit. Um, whoops. Description of the band directors too. There's, um, school schedules if parents need to get ahold of them for some reason, or, or even the students. This is not just for community members, but it's also for students too, because then they can look at other classes that are on here. And then what we're doing with the students is, we're gonna be adding, and let me go back to the band one first. Information that the teachers want to share, the attendance policies, um, band points, how you can letter in band or choir, fundraising policy, so they can click on there, and then they can just put that information out as well. Uh, we also wanted to showcase other events, um, not just district events that the kids are participating in. There are many students that are involved in the Green Bay U Symphony. Is Jenna one of those? They had their concert yesterday. There's all-state choirs on here. Last year, Jenna was one of the honors choir students. Can't see the other student on here, it kinda cut it off, but, um, we're still awaiting this year's. We'll see who's in there. Uh, New Voices, couple members that were participating in that choir in Appleton this past fall. I added this, Blow Your Own Horn. So if students are participating in an event outside of the school district and they wanna showcase what they've done, they can fill out this form. It comes in my Google email, and then somebody will contact them to do a little interview with them, and we can showcase them on the website as well. Donations. We're always looking for donations. Um, fundraisers, information on the fundraising events. There's the gas cards. Uh, we also sell vinyl stickers for cars. Parents want to purchase them, checks. And a neat thing that a lot of the parents like are, is the gallery here. I'm always seen with a camera, if you don't know me. So I'm at most of these events anyways, because my kids are participating in them. So what I do is I take pictures and create a slideshow, and the parents can see all the pictures, um, of their students. So all these different galleries are from events that happened in the district. There's Valley View, um, some from last year still on here. So as events occur, um, if I can't be at the event, somebody else will send me pictures, and then I will add that, so parents can view them. And then, um, as part of the AMPA part, we have a list of board members here. We're gonna be adding all the agendas and minutes, um, for each of our meetings on here. Uh, we're still working on revising our mission statement this year. That's our next goal at our meeting. Uh, funding requests. If parents or teachers want some sort of funds for their activities, um, they're gonna fill it out online, and then we would get it on Google, and they would attend our meeting. Concert etiquette, which everyone should be aware of before they attend concerts, especially turning off those cell phones. And, let's see here. And then information of contacting either the directors or the board members. They need that. So, that's kinda that in a nutshell. Any questions?
So you put this out as a volunteer?
Yes, as part of the, as part of AMPA. I'm not a board member. I'm just a parent, and I wanted that information. I wanted to showcase what kids were doing, and I felt like there needed to be a lot more communication, um, out there, so.
So can parents link to this right from the high school's page?
Yes. Brad was so graciously to do that. Um, he added that to each of the teacher pages on the school's website, um, and then they can just click on it.
That's great.
Yeah, and then once in a while, I put it on the Facebook page too, so they can link, just click on it and go from there.
So will you prepare somebody to eventually take over for you doing this?
The great thing about this is that, thank you to Mandy Schrader. She was a huge help in organizing this website for me. We do it on Google Drive, so whenever I decide to leave, or, um, my kids graduate, um, and somebody else needs to take over, all those files can just be shared with them and just continue on. So it doesn't have to be reinvented, which is great.
That's one of the things we're working on this year, 'cause all the past files are all paper. So we're trying to get everything electronic, so when we step down, someone can just step right in and have everything right there, so.
Seems like a big undertaking. Holy cats. A lot of people commend you for that. Holy cow.
Yeah, you're welcome. But I, I really feel like the kids deserve a lot of credit, and with sports, we get a lot of sports credit in our district. Um, but for the music program, I'm not sure a lot of parents are aware of how many events and things that the kids do, so I wanted to really get that out there and publicize them for their efforts.
What, what grade? Is it sixth grade when they start being able to play instruments?
Yes, and they can start participating in Solo Ensemble Festival at sixth grade.
Sixth grade.
Six to twelve, yeah.
What, is it the summer before sixth grade? It sounds like a summer.
Um, yeah, they're doing instrument placement, so they're gonna go see which instrument is best for them, mouth placement, um, what interest, what instrument they're interested in as well. Then they have band lessons during the summer, so to kinda start them off. It's about a week, isn't it? Four days, I think it said on the website.
No training before that? They don't need, like, they can just come in?
Some of them have training on an instrument, um, but usually they start picking it up during the summer. Um, in many lessons, they go by like clarinets, or flutes, or percussion, um, start getting familiar with your instrument, and then they take off at ground zero.
Just wait, it's great.
It is great, so.
And AMPA does support K three.
And then they did braces, and they have to learn all over again.
A lot of things at Cormier, you know, everything. We're there for, for all of them, so to support them.
Yep, so some big things coming up, um, in, in April. The Concert Choir is doing the Mozart Requiem at the Meyer. Is it the Meyer? No, it's, uh.
Yes, at the Meyer.
Yeah, the Meyer. So all these kids that are going to prom that are juniors better get some sleep, because the next day, it's a very busy day. They also have a symphonic concert and wind concert ensemble, so you better be going to bed very early. But, yeah, so, check out our page, like our Facebook page, and, um, we appreciate the.
Spread the word.
Support.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, move on to the consent agenda. It consists of the minutes of the regular meeting held on Monday, February twenty-second. Minutes of the executive session on Monday, February twenty-second. Schedule checks written, two eighteen to three eight. Uh, staffing, resignation of Helen Drawl from her part-time food service assistant and cashier position at Parkview. Retirement request of Deborah Friedel from her full-time administrative associate guidance secretary position at the high school. We have two co-curricular contracts, and we have on your desks, uh, resignation of Deborah Last for morning and noon duty supervisor position at Pioneer, and the retirement of Angela Salmon.
Salmon.
From her full-time educational associate, special education aide position at Pioneer at the end of this year. Need a motion, please.
I'll make a motion for the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
Can I just say one thing about Debbie Friedel? Forty-two years in the district. I was, and when I saw it the other day, I was amazed by that. It's just fantastic.
I think she's the last one that was in the district when we were in school. Wasn't it? She was still there.
That's a good question.
That's a long time ago.
It is a long time ago, yeah. But, but, anyway, but, didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, we got a motion in a second. Uh, any other discussion? All in favor of motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion passes. Superintendent's report. Brian.
Alright, just a few things this evening to share. As far as the building project update, not a lot of new news, but if you've driven by, you see the brickwork now being applied to the front of the auditorium. Last week, I think they said they had twenty cement trucks there. They poured the first round of the, the base of the pool, so. I'll just remind you, if you are at all interested, you give us a little notice, and, uh, you're welcome to come through and tour that. It's really interesting to see the development, especially right now. From one week to the next, there's a whole lot of things going on there, but still right on schedule and.
Brian, tomorrow afternoon?
Three fifteen, tomorrow afternoon. There's a group invite. And if for some reason that does not work, just let us know. We can, we can make it work when it, when it fits your schedule. Three fifteen, we're gonna have a number of the staff members and a big group going through, so they're anticipating a little more detailed tour, you know, tomorrow night, but just say the word. It's all, but all pretty much on schedule. Um, I wanted to just talk a little bit about, um, a week ago, we had a, an advisory committee meeting with the tech ed department, and really have a good core group of business people that are committing time and effort. And really, the focus of that meeting was to really plan a, a special event that's coming up in May, so. It's looking like the afternoon of May twelfth, by invite only. The board will be invited, as well as a number of other business people. And it's really a, a celebration of the Bo Metler Innovation Center, and it'll include nine or ten different student stations, um, demonstrating robotics, basically demonstrating everything that we're showcasing in the tech department, as well as articulating the mission to partner with businesses and to create innovative students to go into the workforce. The impetus of that event also focuses on letting the community know what our goal is in terms of really developing that innovation center, so. I, I'm gonna say right now, the, in the planning stages, they're looking at doing that sort of in the late afternoon. Three until five, three-thirty until five-thirty. That's what they're thinking right now. Three until five, three thirty until five thirty, that's what they're thinking right now, that's May twelfth, and we're also, um, really hoping to invite some dignitaries there and, uh, really launch that whole department now after, obviously a lot has happened with donations so far, but we have, we have a bigger, bigger vision to really turn that into an innovation center, and to really help students make that, that next step beyond high school into partnerships, into, uh, the tech ed arena, so to speak, you know, instead of just the college four-year bound student, uh, attractive areas. We want to really showcase some of these other options that kids will have as, as they leave high school. And then last, the reason why I really did come up in front here, is I, you know, there's a, there's a phrase that, that is the sweet sixteen. Well, Jenny almost made the sweet sixteen, she made it fifteen years. I want to personally thank you on behalf of the administration and the students in our community for fifteen years, and there probably, there is not an office that Jenny did not fill on the board, as I, as Jen was so nice to do research. President, vice president, clerk, treasurer, equity committee, active on the policy committee. The list goes on, there is a lot of stuff that went on over those fifteen years, and I just want to say thank you, Jenny. I also want to say, thank you for sticking your neck out for kids and helping them. You really put kids in the center of your decisions. Thank you for sticking your neck out in effort to represent especially the less fortunate kids. You had a soft spot there and had a way of not bending on certain issues because of that. Thank you for sticking your neck out to ensure equity and fair treatment of others. There are core values that I have learned about you in just five years that are core values, so that's probably the best way for me to say that. Thank you for sticking your neck out to carefully review policies, I mentioned earlier, and carefully, and we all know how painful policy can be, but how extremely necessary it is to get it right, especially if something goes wrong and we have to, um, deal with policy, and the most important role as a board member is to set policy, and our job is to carry it out, you take that very seriously. And lastly, thank you for sticking your neck out to offer a safety net for some of our more severe disciplinary situations. The hardest job we have, and I, I would agree, is to deal with a real severe disciplinary situation and have to make the decision about the life of a child, so I want to say thank you, and I want to, uh, do a little exit stage left, I have a little gift for you here.
Uh-oh. Is it a big spoon?
So once again, Jenny, thank you for your fifteen years of service. We really appreciate having you do this, thank you.
I, oh my gosh, there you go.
You have to tell them your story after you wrap.
Well, I do collect giraffes. And I'm not allowed to bring home anymore. Maybe they can sneak in. Do I have another story?
Well, I just knew you were very.
I'm a big giraffe, thank you. You know what I thought it was gonna be, when I, I always joke about getting the big spoon awards because I stir the pot most often. So when I saw this, I'm like, oh my gosh, they actually got me a big spoon. But thank you, this is awesome, he's gonna sit right here for the meeting.
I don't know, did you, anybody know that next month, she is attending Haiti for Savior Starving Children?
Savior Starving, yes, so I'm heading in a new direction.
So, donating more time down there, Haiti.
I just want to call, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, a new adventure.
Okay, George.
Is, is this gonna bother you?
No, no.
Okay. He's quiet.
Okay, we're, we're, uh, finishing off with, uh, some favorite topics that Jenny's here, uh, we'll go into policies. Next, we have first reading of a bunch of policies on our discussion items this evening. I don't know if anybody has any one particular one they want to take a look at, or if everything looks good, or where we're at on this. Any questions on any? We're gonna have another kick at the cat next time anyways, but I mean, to, to prove them, but I mean, I hope everybody has read them.
As is the case, a lot of them are just legal updates. There's one in there about, um, conceal and carry for police liaison officers. You probably remember, and Paul wouldn't know this maybe, but about a half a year ago, we've actually created a policy that covers that already, it's an agreement we have with the village, and now they're just making that a statewide, um, and legally it's, it's okay for officers to carry, conceal and carry whether they're on duty or off duty. But our policy, of course, does not allow anyone else to do that, staff included, so, which is, I think, the way it should be. We're starting to see that though, in other states in the nation, where some staff members are becoming trained, and that is changing nationally, so that'll be kind of interesting to watch, see all that, college campuses, but public schools as well.
So is the, the terminology that's being used what's being dictated to us, or an option to us, and I say, the, the thing that.
Always an option.
I wondered about the qualified former law enforcement officers, is there any reason why that would be a red flag? Or too leni-
Which one is that one in?
I cringe at the thought of any weapon, anywhere, and so.
Thirty-two seventeen is the first number.
Thirty-two seventeen.
You guys can decide next month, that, that's what we're. But I didn't know what the thought was behind that.
What's the number on that one, Jenny?
Forty-two seventeen, and it might be duplicated more than one place.
I know that we talked about that quite a bit the last time we were, you know, when we approved this policy the last year, or the year before when it actually came through, but um, I think that was for, you know, even like, uh, officers from other communities that come here to like a football game and stuff as well.
I think that, that's what I recall it was.
Yeah.
We said no to that, I believe we said no to that.
I don't think so, I think it's a yes.
No, it was a yes. Was it a yes?
Yeah, I personally, I have no issue, any officer that has been trained, I, I welcome them to be on, onsite frankly. I don't have an issue with that myself personally. It's different, obviously, when these other states start talking about the teachers that are comfortable getting trained and whatnot. My concern with that isn't about the teacher, it's about what kids may do in a, in a room or whatnot. An officer obviously has much more training to deal with, something like that, and they're, they're not typically just in the room instructing kids, you could say, in the DARE program, she is, but that's my concern, you know, it only takes two or three kids to get an idea, and they know one teacher has a, it's conceal and carrying, it's still one on three or four, that's my concern, but professional training with an officer, I think it's sad that we have to have this discussion, but I think, I don't, I don't have an issue with that.
But what is the, yeah, and I agree with Jenny, what is, uh, the intention of having a former law enforcement officer be? Is that a retired police officer, is that what you're?
I don't know, I guess you'd have to agree with the fact that that former officer has that professional training and, and has years of experience. If you're not comfortable with that, we could, we could, we can revise that, say current, uh, current active duty officers.
I just don't know why they would want to, or would have to be, armed well on, on campus. Look, it's a retired Eschwabenon police officer that has the training, why would we say no? No, but why would they need to carry a firearm on campus, I guess, I don't understand. If they carry a firearm, unless they're having it all the time, yeah, which.
You take someone like Gary that knows still a lot of the kids and they were to attend events, and he has a conceal and carry and he has a training. I, I have no issue with that.
I don't have any problem with that. No, I don't have any problem with that, I just was wondering why it's.
Question, yeah, I'm not sure why they.
Do we want to leave it, or do you want to?
I would leave it.
Is it anybody with firearm certification?
No.
Has to be, uh, I guess what level of, uh, you know?
Well, it's got, you have to be either off-duty law enforcement officer right here.
Qualified.
Former law enforcement officer. Go all the way back. No.
If you open up thirty-two seventeen, you go to page.
We'll wait to, right here, this fifth one.
This one, yeah.
I'll pull the new guide card here, what does it mean that, that to have an X in there?
The X means that that's in current policy.
That's correct.
In the brackets, you get, you get a choice whether you want it in there or not. Um, they always give us all the choices, and so I go through and I mark what we have in current policy, so if there's not an X, um, it means we don't have it in current policy, if it's something we wanted, we could put here, we have a choice, the X means we have chose it in the past.
Okay, thank you.
If it is, it's amended there, are we okay with that? Let's see what it says in there, last chance?
Yeah, but I'm, I'm, I'm kinda like, why? I mean, I can see that if you're a retired police officer and you, you've always carried one, you have a, you have a permit to carry it, and you're going on campus, you shouldn't have say, oh, I gotta take my gun off. You're trained with it, you're not gonna. But are you up to date on your training, are you, who's verifying that? I don't know, who does that, but. You know, I, I, I just understand what you're saying, because I'm like, okay, where's the, you're retired, okay, how long can, so you're eighty-nine years old and I can still, I, I don't know, is there a certain time that you say? Guess it's kind of like a question.
If you want, I can talk with Chief Dunning about that, get his, get his opinion.
Oh, I have a question, well, somebody could be a qualified law officer, do you sound as if what, whether they're not in good standing? Whether they're on administrative leave.
Can we modify these?
Uh-huh.
Sure.
I just, what's the, necessary to have the agreement with employed agencies for the individuals? Does that mean they gotta be, is there a way to have them registered if they want to carry on, if they are, if they're up to date on their certifications and everything, I mean, I don't.
Well, if they're an active, active officer, I think it's, um, uh, you know, they got their credentials and everything to, to fall back on, but if it's a, I'm, I'm questioning about the former law, former law enforcement officers, because I know a bunch of them that probably don't, I don't know, they're probably qualified, but they're not.
Carrying.
Carrying, but, uh, I don't know if that's necessary to have.
Check with Che, with Chief Dunning. Yeah, do they need to provide us with a list or something, I mean, uh.
What is the incentive for allowing them, do we anticipate it will help us out in some way?
Every second, it saves a lot of lives.
Okay.
Because it takes, if you study what's happened in other schools, a lot happens within five or six minutes. And we're fortunate here, because public safety will be here within minutes, given our location. But we're also talking on the crisis, um, committee, we're surveying area schools to see what else they do. And I've learned, uh, we'll talk more about that, but they, they have, the public safety, police liaison officers have access to a rifle in most area high schools right now in our surrounding area. And that's, that's becoming very common, that's something I've asked, I'm working with Chief on that right now, and Jackie's looking into that. So we'll be, we'll be likely coming to you with that discussion, I just, that's just a heads up, but since it's interrelated, I wanted you to know. And it's just a, it's a deterrent, and it's a good question, Jenny. You think of the other option, if something occurs in a school, within a minute or two minutes, if we can cut that minute to thirty seconds, or five minutes to two minutes, that's huge, and, uh, with a professional that's trained, you know, our policy is to run, to hide, to even fight, right? The reason we're doing that is we're buying seconds until they can come here and act, and, uh, those are the critical minutes, that's what we're trying to diminish, and that's why I weigh in on, it's a no-brainer to me, if you have public safety that are professionally trained, we welcome them to our events, because that's, that's a deterrent. And it's not that, who, who likes this, and who would have ever guessed ten years ago we'd be having this discussion? It's just where we are right now.
Okay.
I'll, I'll ask Chief, though, I think that's a good question, if someone's out of the profession for fifteen or twenty years, and they have not certified in training, I know what I'm like, shooting a bow and arrow after I don't shoot all one season. It's a good question, I'll get, I'll get his opinion on that.
I agree with the deterrent thing, and I probably shouldn't say this on record, but my father-in-law, he's a retired police officer, and he, you know, now he has this concealed and carry, but, I'm, I'm sorry, the guy's on a cane, he's like, you know, I'm like, I don't know if I'd want him protecting me, I don't know. But, I have a good relationship with him.
You used to have. Hey, is, is he watching tonight?
That was recorded.
Okay, so we'll bring that, check on that, and, uh, if anybody else has any questions, we've got another, like I say, another whack at this next meeting, so. Okay, we'll move on to G, action items, Project Lead the Way Computer Science Program. Double J Show.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, we're very excited this evening to come before the board and talk about Project Lead the Way in computer science. Um, we are, we are a Project Lead the Way district, we have Gateway at the middle school, and then we have the engineering program at the high school. Um, Project Lead the Way Computer Science Program is relatively new, however, it's been on the radar of Craig Hoyska, who's our computer science teacher at the high school. And he's mentioned that to us a number of times, and then last year, we were able to take a site visit to Elkhorn, Wisconsin. There are very few school districts in the state of Wisconsin that have fully adopted the program, because it is relatively new. In your board packet, you receive some information from Jamie and I, and it outlined that there is a course still in, in process, that's the cyber, cybersecurity course, and there's a course, um, that's coming out this year, as, this coming school year as well. But the nice thing about Project Lead the Way's computer science program is because we put Craig to the test every year, because he's constantly having to revisit what he's teaching in that class, because technology is changing so quickly. And what Project Lead the Way is doing, is they're doing that work for us, and it's, again, based off of projects, and students will be involved and actually looking at real-life issues and concerns with technology. Want to go ahead and talk about middle school?
Sure, so what we're looking at is how can we expand to a, a six-twelve computer science program? Um, one of the things that Project Lead the Way shared with us is that the projected number of jobs will be in two thousand and eighteen is two point eight million dollars in STEM fields, of those two point eight, one point four million are computer science jobs.
That's huge.
It's, that's, that's a huge number, so we're trying to figure out how we're gonna put our students in the best place for college replacement. So, one of the things that Craig noticed in his pilot program was that this course that he's teaching called Intro to Computer Science could easily be taught at the middle school level, so after some research with Project Lead the Way, in fact, that course is a middle school course, part of their gateway, it's called Intro to Computer Science, it's, it's actually a part one of that course. So what we've looked into is, is how do, how can we fit that in at Parkview? So currently, this year, we teach two computer-esque courses, it used to be the old, um, computer applications, Microsoft Word, Excel, and now with the world of Chromebooks, we've had to pull it back from that, and this year we taught two courses, keyboarding to the sixth graders, and then digital citizenship to eighth graders. What we'd like to do is offer Project Lead the Way at the eighth grade level, with Intro to Computer Science, and push digital citizenship down to sixth grade. One of the things that, and Chris will probably chop on here, that we've been, I actually really enjoy doing, in fact, we have one tomorrow night, we've, we've been offering social media courses to our parents at Parkview. And what we've noticed is we talk about digital citizenship, it's our sixth grade parents who are interested in digital citizenship, and we're teaching it at eighth grade, and unfortunately, a lot of our kids are sharing past experience about digital citizenship, and I think it's too late. As much as our kids are invested in social media, um, sixth grade's where we need to teach that course, and get on the front of it to talk about the choices they're making and things like that, so what we'd like to do is, is change keyboarding to digital citizenship, still teach some of those aspects of keyboarding within the digital citizenship framework of that content, and then teach the Intro to Computer Science course at the eighth grade level, and then that gives Craig some flexibility to teaching the Project Lead the Way courses in greater depth at, at the high school level.
And we didn't bring, we asked Craig to be here this evening if you had any questions specifically about the courses, um, but they really, they are really engaging, and Craig has had lots of good things to say about the pilot program that he's trying this year, it's the Intro to Computer Science.
And it, it's actually, it's a perfect time, um, as you guys have seen with some of our, um, spotlight stuff in the, in the beginning, we've done a lot, K eight, actually, K twelve, with coding and robotics and our DI groups. And this type of core curriculum is, it's, it's engaging to kids, and this Project Lead the Way that Craig can talk about, it's awesome. We, we give Android tablets, actually design and create an app on the tablet. Um, it's, it's high-engaging stuff, and it's, it's neat, and I think it'll fit with the middle school environment quite well. That said, from a budgetary side of it, the two biggest impacts are, um, because of Project Lead the Way, we have to provide Project Lead the Way training and like air certification, and then we have to buy additional, um, Android tablets for the middle school as well as the high school. Right now, with the pilot course, we bought some for the high school.
And we just had two people from Project Lead the Way come and visit us a couple of weeks ago. Um, they wanted to look at what we're doing in, in the engineering field, because they're very impressed with what's happening in Ashwabanon. And they did talk about the fact that we may be able to have some negotiations, some wiggle room within the tablets and things that we would have to purchase through Project Lead the Way. 'Cause that's been one of the struggles, is Project Lead the Way is very specific on the equipment and the requirements that they have for that equipment. And now, in talking to the two, um, people that visited us, there is some flexibility. So we don't anticipate as much of a cost with the technology. But both the training and the technology would come from the curriculum budget. We won't make you pay for it, not if yours, Craig.
Okay, so one of the things that you don't have in here is any budgetary items, and what's the changes of what we're doing currently, I guess? I mean, we got curriculum, course descriptions, and we got... That's it?
Well, one of the things, um, maybe I should, do you wanna speak to it, or I, I certainly can, because we've kind of substituted two courses?
So basically, we've eliminated some of the courses that have been there in the past with these new Project Lead the Way courses. And I started teaching this Intro to Computer Science class, and that replaced some of the, uh, one of the classes that I taught previously. And now that one's going to evaporate, and I'll be just teaching just this, uh, computer science. And now, they, they've changed it to what's called Computer Science Principles. Uh, there's a new AP class that's coming out, AP Computer Science Principles, and that class just started this fall. And this is, that's the, this is the first year of that. And this really, the Project Lead the Way's been one of the leaders in aligning itself with that AP class. And so the, the students that would be able, they would have the opportunity to take the AP test as a part of that as well. And it just kind of replaces some of the courses that I've currently taught previously. To get rid of those and bring in this, a new, fresh curriculum that we have.
Similar to Parkview as well. It's the same, it's still two course offerings, it's just the course content changes.
So does this, do they, do you integrate with the tech team if, or the... You know, the, the Metler, Duane, Tech Ed?
Sure, they're, they're both Project Lead the Way, but there's a lot of carryover. There's no doubt that the kids who go through the computer science branch of Project Lead the Way are going to work on a lot of foundational math skills with coding, they're gonna work on a lot of foundational, um, uh, what's the word? Application coding that will definitely transfer over to the manufacturing and, 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 um, encoding, um, what's the word I'm looking for?
You look like, like CNC machine.
Yeah, thank you.
Like CNC programming right now. I mean, in northeast Wisconsin, if you wanna be a CNC programmer, right now, you can go and get a job instantly. And a lot of the stuff that we'll do, will carry over to, I mean, just the, the logic, all those kind of things will easily carry over to that CNC side. So there's a lot of tie-ins that way, and there's a lot of tie-ins with just how Project Lead the Way approaches problem solving. And from an engineering background and those kind of things, a lot of those same principles are taught in the computer science side as well. So once they've been in that, other, the other Project Lead the Way branches, a lot of that same teaching style or that same curricular style is, is carried over into the computer science side as well.
And something that Project Lead the Way is doing is whether you're in the engineering branch or the computer science branch, that there, at some point, their capstone class actually will be something that you can pull on from a much different area. So that capstone class might actually encompass some engineering, some science, computer science, and pulling those skills together as the capstone. And they won't be as isolated sections.
So how many other branches does Project Lead the Way have?
The biomedical.
What is it?
Biomedical.
So that teach CNA?
Um, no. No, but it does, it does open up more of the practical experiences that would come for a student that would like to go into medicine. They're actually project-based again, where they would actually look at a disease, and they would, um, just, they would talk about ways that they could prevent that. Different types of activities. We've looked at that program, um, and the science department is now under review. And we may actually take some of that biomedical, um, those pieces, and then work with, um, the Ballen School of Medicine to do some nice things there. Trying to figure out a way to get that CNA course manageable, because we've got a lot of kids that are, are taking that. We've got some great alignment with, um, NWTC, with our medical terminology course. So Project Lead the Way does offer that strand for us as well. So we're kind of, again, looking at that as an option down the road.
Another exciting thing from our conversation with Project Lead the Way is that once you're a Project Lead the Way school, they're not allowing you to pick and choose course, so you might be able to pick just one course out of biomedical instead of having to teach the entire, you know, up to the capstone. So you, you'll be able to choose, which is kind of nice and allows freedom to work.
Yes.
And something that Craig can talk about too is, you know, maybe we, there might be just certain courses we offer at certain times and not necessarily the same pathway, which...
So, I'm gonna ask you, because I know that in a couple agenda items, we got this budget thing here, and, and some of the things are, some of the recommendations are reducing some of those numbers based on the cuts that we have to make. Does this program still, it, it doesn't come into any of those programs?
It's basically a zero-cost item, because you're gonna have kids in sixth grade in either, currently in the keyboarding class or now the digital citizenship, so the cost is the same depending on either class you offer.
But your, your new computers and everything that you're...
No, we'll use existing projects, we'll use existing. Um, it'll be scheduled, right now, we have existing laptops that are used for, um, keyboarding typing, which we'll really use for CSC, for computer science. And we're gonna work on, Project Lead the Way initially required a one-to-one or two-to-one of the Android tablets, but they said there's actually some wiggle room with that, so depending on scheduling, we might only have to buy some and do some sharing between buildings or work on that.
Yes.
Jamie, any additional licensing costs?
There's some project, there's some Project Lead the Way training that you have to do. Craig, how long was your training last?
Well, last, last year, I went to the University of Illinois for a week. And then this summer, in part of the Computer Science Principles, I'll have to go for two weeks somewhere.
MSOE is one of the locations in the state, but then there are other locations.
But again, to, to be offering relative computer science, we're gonna have to offer that training no matter what, because it changes so much, and it's nice that Project Lead the Way packages that for our teachers, so they can do it. 'Cause right now, Craig was trying to do that on his own, and that's, that's very difficult in this field.
How many other local schools do this?
There are none around this area, because when we wanted to look at some schools to see how the curriculum was run, there was one down near Milwaukee, and that was a private school, and then Elkhorn. There were other people that were interested in it at the time, but to my knowledge, there's not a school around here yet that's offering it.
So why is that?
Well, I think because it's, it is new, and it's something that, again, there's a cyber course that's gonna be available two thousand and eighteen. And one of the courses will come into play two thousand and seventeen, so they're in the process of building and creating all of this. Some of the, the one course that they've got, the principals' course, that was piloted this year. And so now that's gonna be available down the road.
I wanted to share this at the end, but since you asked, Mark, I think another reason for that frankly is people like Craig and our other teachers, you have to be a teacher that's willing to go above and beyond. This isn't a, a light load when he goes there for that week. I understand that's a pretty intense week of training. So compliment to you, Craig, and to all of our teachers that have done this. I think that's a big reason, Mark, frankly. You have to have someone that has an engineering-type mind. That's not something they majored in in college. This is, augments with what they've had.
So basically, this is gonna be just swapping classes for classes, right?
Yes.
So there's no cost that's gonna be involved there?
Correct.
And then it would just be a two-week training for Craig's part?
And potentially some Android tablets, um, but our, Scott and I's biggest role is to try to leverage as much of the Project Lead the Way machine that we have, um, and use, and, and basically all the computer... The only thing we'd have to buy additionally would be potentially Android tablets. The other computers we have in existence now, we have to get on rotation schedule, which is our budget for.
And then the programs, would the programs you have to buy too?
Um, that's part, and that's...
That comes part of the curriculum that we'll purchase.
Tablets are fairly inexpensive too. So they're, I think the fourteen that we bought last year were higher. Everyone's higher than the cost for where we have fourteen or sixteen.
I think we had fourteen at about two-hundred and something.
Yeah, so they're less than five thousand dollars for, for that, so we could get something even cheaper than that next time around.
Project Lead the Way has actually removed some, well, some things you have to choose. Like, we, we picked, uh, Android devices that we can manage, and actually Google removed that, so that would reduce the price greatly from what we choose. We, we had limited choices last time, and now we have multiple choices.
And one of the programs, Python, I don't know a whole lot about technology, and they laugh at me all the time, but Python is currently being used in the course that we piloted, and that would go into the course that we would offer next year if you, yes, we look forward to approval. And then down the road, we'd also have to look at Java. And I, I don't know a whole lot about that either, but I know that those are courses, but those are programs.
But again, all that, all that skill work, um, and Project Lead the Way has all sorts of data on it, talks about the that it has in Tech Ed, and it has in math, and it has in general in twenty-first century skills with communication and problem solving. This is the way that that program is based. So the, the positives of this program are huge.
So Keith, budget-wise, this is calculated into your budget for next year?
Yes, yes. It probably goes without saying that it's part of the advertising and marketing for open enrollment, I would think. Like, one of the things that we can, that will attract students.
It probably should be.
Well, I was gonna say to piggyback off Brian, I mean, definitely, you know, as I am pretty new and understanding a lot more in the short time gathering all this stuff, I'm gonna say I'm definitely impressed, and I'm, I'm getting happier and happier about sending my kids to Ashwabanon when I hear about these things. And, you know, as my friends and other people I run into say, well, why do you open early kids to Ashwabanon? And I can say, because of things like this, 'cause we're, you know, pioneers of these really cool programs. I think it's, it's definitely, uh, solidifying my decisions right now.
And as Dr. Haynes had pointed out, we couldn't do a lot of these things if people like Craig weren't willing to step up and attend two weeks this summer.
Yeah.
So we appreciate that.
Okay, we have a motion on this?
I'll make a motion to, um, to accept the... Make sure I put it right here.
Project Lead the Way Computer Science?
Approve the addition Project Lead the Way Computer Science Program into the Computer Science Program, grades eight, twelve.
I'll second.
You have a motion in the second? Any discussion?
I actually just have one question. Is the middle school, is that an elective setting, or is that a...
It will be required.
Required, okay.
Which? I think to me, we require a lot of our patients out of the wild, we don't require them as a hireable one.
All in favor of motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Foes? Motion passes.
Disclaimer, mine does this, yours doesn't, so don't try. Saw this, and yours don't go that way, so don't go that way now.
Thank you.
Or does one time.
Next, we got, uh, youth options. We got a bunch of them. And that's the reason I asked about CNA. There's a lot of them.
Yeah, there's nineteen requests, and, uh, the requests are dominated by CNA, um, requirements. There are a couple of students with, and I would clarify, with, uh, a lot of requests. Many times, those requests are made knowing that, uh, they're gonna be able to schedule one or two courses. And rarely have we had students, uh, participate in more than one or two courses just 'cause it's so difficult to schedule and be off-campus. Along with the other requirements, um, the, the couple of students today, uh, that are requesting a lot, a lot of math and science still have graduation requirements as it relates to English Language Arts, Social Studies, and some of our in-house graduation requirements. So it's unrealistic to think that they'd be able to be off-campus for the entire day taking youth options courses.
So youth options, I mean, you can, you, you can't, you have to have, you could, if they exhausted that curriculum, they can opt for it.
Well, and really, that's exhaust the curriculum, but really, if you don't have a comparable course, that's the term that they use. So if the kids have taken every science course that we've offered, that we offer, accelerated course, then we don't have a comparable course as it relates to the college course, um, that they're taking. So with one of those requests, a student, a junior student has, um, will have taken every math course that we offer through AP Calculus. So as a result, we don't have a comparable math course for the student to take. They've already taken, similarly with science too. And so, um, the state statute will reference comparable course. So Spanish two, uh, is an example, that student has taken every Spanish course that we have, uh, that we offer, so...
And you said that out of the nineteen, not all will likely end up with them because of scheduling.
My experience has been no.
So what do you think the realistic number is? I'm not holding you to it, or anything.
I think of a quarter of our kids end up out at youth options. Now, with that said though, with the high number of CNA requests this time, I'm finding that more and more students that have a, a career interest in the medical field are taking the CNA course. So, um, you know, there's ten or twelve CNA requests, and, but depending on how that's scheduled, that's a real commitment for the kids, because a lot of times, that's Saturdays, uh, eight Saturdays, or something like that. And the kids are involved in so much, whether it be, well, we heard band and music and co-curriculars and those other things that occur on weekends, you know, it just depends on, on where their priorities are and where they go.
Well, it's such a high number this time, it's like, I was floored when I seen how many were up there for all these...
Well, and years ago, you may remember Pat Russo, we looked at, um, actually teaching the CNA course on campus, and the cost to implement that program was just exorbitant, where, um, quite honestly, it was cheaper to send kids, uh, out utilizing the youth options than to implement our own program.
What about sub...
Keith, you might remember that.
What about subcontracting a teacher to come in and do that?
Well, it's not just the teachers, it's the equipment and creating a, a mini, um, lab. So it was just an unbelievable, you remember that, Keith? It was an unbelievable cost, where it was just cheaper to send the kids out for youth options.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the youth options as presented.
I'll second.
Motion in the second? Any other discussion? Just, so, the cost, again, we absorb the cost of the students taking these classes.
Keith, budgets for youth options expense, and so either, either we have enough in there, or we don't.
By state law, we have to.
It's all state statute, and so...
Okay.
Thank you.
All in favor of motion, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Foes? Motion passes. Thank you. I will move on to a preliminary budget review. These aren't, not real good news for us this year, is it, Keith?
No, we, we knew we were gonna have a tough budget year. Last year, if you remember, enrollment was down a little bit, and we had a very large declining enrollment exemption in our revenue limit, so we knew that was coming off the top. In addition, with the construction projects going on, we've agreed as a district to take on some of the equipment costs or costs associated with construction for the pool and the auditorium. So those increased our budget significantly. When I, when I run the numbers, if we assume no net new open enrollment, which we have almost ninety students graduating who are open enrollment, so that means we need ninety new just to replace those students, and we assume a one percent salary increase for starting a five percent health insurance increase, we need to cut over one-point-one million. Working with administrative staff, and I say this every year, but I don't say it lightly, this is the hardest job or the worst job from an administrative team standpoint, as we look at this, what we're gonna do to try and balance this budget. But every year, and, and we've gotten to the point where we, everybody expects it, we know we're gonna do it every year. We, we look at staffing and what changes can we make, where can we just squeeze every drop off that we can? When we look at our, our, our projected enrollment, we're able to project five FTE reduction based on enrollment, where we are, and still stay within our planned enrollment ranges in grade levels. So we're not increasing class size, it's, but we're tight on the top end of the class size, so I just wanna make sure we're clear. Our enrollment projection is just that, it's a projection, it changes a lot between now and then. But we are within our, our target ranges for our grade levels. We can save approximately five FTE, so that brings our need, need for cuts down under nine-hundred thousand to eight-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand. We put together a list of prioritized items, you don't... We put together a list of prioritized items, you don't have to take action on these right now. The reason we bring this this month is, next month, we need to have this list finalized because what we as an administrative team have to do is, any reductions that involve any layoffs, you have to approve the layoff in April. We have to give preliminary notice to anybody who would get a layoff or a partial layoff before the end of April and final notice in May. We can still recall them after that, but if we don't give them the preliminary notice before the end of April and the final notice, we can, their contract automatically renewed. So that's why we need to have this list finalized for April so we know exactly where we are. So this is really your chance to tell me to move something around or change things. But this is the list that we put together administratively, the entire team working on brainstorming ideas. One A and B are no brainers. Those are things that we're gonna do that just makes sense. Energy savings associated with LED lighting, that we're gonna do some relamping in the hallways. But you should know, that means the hallways currently are overlit by standards. So we're gonna reduce the lighting a little bit in the hallways. Hopefully, it's not very noticeable, but if you go to the high school right now, in the main hallway by the lunchroom, you'll see we're testing out some different LED bulbs and testing some things out. So if you look down the hallway, you'll see the light levels change slightly. I think if we changed the whole hallway, you wouldn't notice it. But if you, but because we have some, a section in the old lights and a section in the new lights, you'll notice the difference. So what this is, is we're de-lamping, it's called. So fixture that had two lights before may only have one. It's still, the light will be brighter that one than what one lamp would have been under the old fluorescent, but we're gonna get down closer to the standard there. So that's gonna save us about thirty thousand dollars and that's an annual saving, so that's good news, just by changing the hallways. Our plan is to continue that in the classrooms as well, not de-lamping, but just using the more efficient bulbs and saving some money. But the hallways are the lights that are on the most and there's the most savings there. The second thing is, as you know, fuel prices are as low as they've ever been in recent memory. We buy our fuel with a futures contract, locked it in about three years ago. That contract is expiring in less than a year. We're gonna lock it in now and actually a little lower rate so we can, they'll blend the rate down on the current fuel and blend the futures. So we're gonna save twenty-eight thousand on natural gas for the next year and that savings will be even bigger the following year because we'll be through with the contract we purchased three years ago. So those two things, there's no reason not to do them, they don't affect students, they're gonna be in the best interest of the district. After that, we look at things like the maintenance plan, ten-year maintenance plan, all of the non-priority items. As I mentioned, we have a very large maintenance budget this year because we have the pool and auditorium items in there, plus we have other items that were priority items. So we're reducing the non-priority items. Realize this is not a reduction, it's a delay because a lot of these things need to happen anyway. We're pushing some of them off. They're not items like a roof or a parking lot that are gonna cause problems by delaying where the cost increases the longer you delay. They're updating things like some bathroom fixtures or areas like that. So it's items, things that we'll still need to do in the future, but if we hold them off another year, we're okay. We're gonna apply some technology E-rate money to what we've realized, where we found, we qualified for E-rate on some equipment. We're gonna apply that to cover some of the technology purchases rather than put it into the general revenue of the district. We have restructuring with technology classes at Parkview and the LMS. And as part of what we talked about today, if we're able to restructure the way of staff is we're gonna reduce our LMS time in the elementary LMSs and share people a little more without a layoff and move some people around and save some money there, save about one full-time equivalent. We're gonna, one of the big items in our maintenance plan was the Cormier parking lot. And as you know, I've been the one championing, championing that project that we need to improve that lot, improve the flow from a safety standpoint. The cost just came in way out of what our estimates were as we, as we did the design work. So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna rebuild the current Cormier lot out of this year's budget. We have money in this year's budget for that. We're gonna look to find ways to be more efficient cost-wise to find, to come up with a plan that we can afford because the cost was about three to four times what we had budgeted to complete that lot. So we think we can do it piece by piece and save some money as smaller projects, so.
Are you gonna be able to improve the flow with what you're doing?
With what we're doing this summer, no. It's, and the flow hasn't improved as we've restructured the way things are. You know, it's one way in, one way out of the parking lot, some things there. And I've said this before, Maria and her staff at Cormier do an awesome job making sure the kids are safe. My concern is not while Maria and her staff are doing their awesome job, my concern is if that changes, if we don't have the staff there, when Maria retires, we need to have that stuff. We're very labor intensive in how we do it right now.
You're not retiring yet.
But at some point, eventually, like, Maria's gonna wanna retire and it's very labor intensive the way it works. And a different flow would be better. So that, because we don't have any, any plans on Maria's end that I've heard about for retirement, we can push this off and work on a different one. So I think we can delay that project. We have in there delaying Chromebook replacements. We rotate our equipment on a regular basis and remember, this is a delay, not a, not an elimination. I've been working with Jamie and Scott to reduce their budget without delaying the Chromebook replacement and we think we'll be able to rotate the Chromebooks and still have that reduction in their budget. But right now, I'm listing it as a delay until I'm sure. And then we have, number seven is elementary specials classes, that's the music, art, FIED. We're looking at class size there and basically, the way it works now is, if you have three sections of, in a grade level, you have three sections of FIED and if you have four sections, you have four sections of FIED. At some point, can we take, if we have four sections, make it three sections of FIED or three sections of art and take one class and distribute the kids in with the others? So we're looking at that, we feel we can save about a little over one FTE by looking at our specials class sizes. And then the next one, we're, right now, we wouldn't have to do based on where our budget sits right now, is add a computer fee in eighth grade. Right now, for the one-to-one at the high school, there's a fee or you can bring your own device. We're not in favor of bringing your own device in eighth grade because having a similar device for all staff members makes sense and we need those devices at times for testing to have everyone on the same device. So we're looking at, what we threw out here was the feasibility of a fee if we need to implement it. But right now, based on the current estimate, we don't need to. But as we do these prioritizations, I always push our administrative team, we've gotta go beyond what we think we need to cut in case we get less open enrollment students than we think, in case we get less resident students, in case something happens at the state level that adjusts our budget. I think at the state level, we're pretty settled for this coming year. It's really about students and how many students we get there. So that one is, may become a future item that we look at next year in the future if we have another budget year like this. Not gonna go through the other ones, but you can see what they are. Our question, my question for you tonight is, is there anything on here that as a group you say absolutely not? Or as a group you say this should be lower on this prioritized list, anything we need to move around? One other question that was asked was layoffs. What, are we gonna have layoffs? There's five FTE we're looking at in the classroom. We met today with all the administrators, there may be some partial layoffs in areas, but I think through attrition of retirements and some people leaving, I think we're able to handle the five FTE reduction where the, or most of that, some of that will result in partial layoffs. When you get to the high school, middle school, it may be a partial percentage in a department, things like that. So there may be some partial layoffs. And when you get to the traveling teachers in those specials areas, the music, art, FIED and world language, depending on the number of sections that we need in different areas, there may be some partial layoffs there. Obviously, if we have retirements or somebody's leaving, then we use that and then we hire somebody part-time instead of full-time and then their FTE kinda floats with our needs from year to year.
Insurance impacted, do we?
I hadn't mentioned that. One of the things I'm optimistic on that'll improve this picture is, right now, I have a five percent health insurance increase. Knock on wood, we're having a very good year on health insurance. I am hopeful that we will be at a zero percent increase on our premiums and that would save us about three hundred thousand dollars if we are. So I don't wanna put that in until we're closer. I should know end of April where we are health insurance because then we can lock in our reinsurance rates and everything and lock that in. It doesn't take much to throw that off, so I don't want you to count on that, but I'm hopeful.
Hey Keith, I have one question please.
Sure.
What's your definition of delay in five and six? How long is that? You're talking one year, six months, or?
It would be one year and we look at it next year in the budget, we try to work it in again. And like I said, we've gotten to the point where we're used to having this budget problem. But what we've done in the past when we've done these delays, especially in building projects and technology, those are things we can delay right now. And then in September, when we have our actual student counts, if the budget improves, we don't add staff back, we add these things back. And so there are things, we can't adjust staffing after that May first date, basically. But we can adjust technology purchases or building projects. So in most years, when we've done those delays, we've been able to add them back in once we had final enrollment numbers.
Jen, can you send Paul a copy of our ten-year maintenance plan so he can kinda see what we're talking about? What's projected CPI?
Last I heard, it's less than one percent, probably less than a half percent this year.
Point three, something in that maybe?
It is really low and I think energy prices, gas prices have a big reason that they're pulling it down. Other things might be up a little bit, the gas prices offset that. So it's definitely less than one percent. But what Brian and I are hearing from other districts is that one percent is not on the high end of what districts are talking about, those that are talking about.
It's not on the high percent?
There are districts, one to two is what we're hearing.
It's up there.
So the one is on the lower end of what we're hearing. And most districts are holding their cards pretty close on what they're planning, but those that have shared with us, one percent's the low end.
What are you seeing in regards to our budget for next year? I'm assuming it's gonna be a little less bleak?
For two thousand seventeen, eighteen? It's hard to say until we have enrollment numbers because that really is the number that drives the next year's cut. Because if our enrollment, resident enrollment dips this year, remember, we get the hold harmless protection, it keeps us from feeling the pain, this year, it's next year. So this year, we're feeling the pain because last year we had the dip. So I'll know in September or October, once we have those final numbers. And the other variable next year, when we go through this, is what's happening at state level? Because now we're in the second year of a two-year state budget, so we know what we're getting per student on the revenue limit. We know what we're getting on open enrollment and on that per pupil aid that they added back in last year. Next year, you've seen what happened last year when the state budget was going on, when they froze those things and eliminated per pupil aid, all those things. So we'll see what happens on the political front. Next year's gonna be a more difficult year to predict. Depending on our enrollment, I'm optimistic it won't be this large a cut.
What was our net open enrollment this year compared to last year?
It was, it was up a fair amount. I was, I, off the top of my head, I don't know the number. I'm thinking we were up total students in the fifty range.
Over what we lost?
Over what we had, no, over what we had the previous year as far as our net incoming.
Right.
So we had over a thousand open enrollment in and we had about a hundred out, if that's what you're looking for.
No, I was thinking of, okay, the seniors that we lost, we replaced that.
We replaced them last year and we had some growth.
We've pretty much done that.
But looking at the numbers this year for open enrollment, they haven't been coming in as fast. And there's still a month plus left in the open enrollment window. So I don't wanna say we're not gonna get the numbers to get that growth, but I was hoping to see those numbers already and they're not rolling in as fast as the years passed. But I think parents know more now that they've got a longer window to apply, so. And as Jen and I talked, the open enrollment, alternative open enrollment where they can go come mid-year, a lot of those parents, why wait for the enrollment window, let's just enroll now? So we see that growth during the year as well. So there's roughly a month left in open enrollment window, is that right?
Twenty ninth of April.
Twenty ninth of April. So probably, I mean, we were just talking a little bit ago about the Project Lead the Way and the Bull Metler Innovation Center. Should we be doing a media blitz or some kind of an advertisement to get some more information out there? I'm not sure, I see it in the paper from time to time or things like that. Is there anything else that we should be doing, social media wise, things like that? I think we look at those and Brad kinda coordinates those media releases. The problem we see is, we're not the only ones thinking about these press releases and it's hard to get some traction with any of the media outlets to come in and do a story enough that really generates a lot. We get some coverage and it depends on the slow news day versus the busy news day. Unfortunately, with the presidential election, I don't think there's been a slow news day for quite a while because they have so much going on, controversy there.
How did you make this decision on how to come here? I mean, is this just word of mouth or did you see an ad or did you?
Well, being a good husband, I listen to my wife.
Trying to make up for the father-in-law.
Yeah, trying to make up for that. No, I was just gonna say that, enrollment go down, I don't know if I have any more kids, but, no, I'm just kidding. But, you know, honestly, I just, we took a look at, I mean, I knew a little bit about some of the schools around the area just from experience and working with different, you know,
True.
teachers and professionals, administrators and stuff. But it was more based on, I think, our experience that we had with, in the Schwabna community, you know, people and the feel that we got from the community as a, you know, it felt like a tight-knit community that, you know, I'd wanna raise my kid in, I guess, so, or our kids in. So originally, like I said, I'm finding more and more reasons to encourage other people to join, you know, and be a part of this as I go along here, but.
So what is, what do you think is an effective tool for us to try to gain more students?
Well, I think a lot of, like any advertising, it's word of mouth. You know, you definitely need people that are proponents for what you do and you need to have them be able to talk to people about this. But even, you know, and I've only been here a couple of months, so, you know, I'm just, like I said, I'm getting, you know, but I don't, where would I go to even find this stuff out? You know, where would I go to, you know, is there, on the website, is there a, why would you enroll your kid in open enrollment page? You know, is there a splash page where, is there? And I don't know that, I'm just, because I'm not a very technology person, you know, but.
We have the open enrollment ad stating the deadlines and that, I think that's all over our social media, all over our website. We've got a refreshed enrollment page, a separate open enrollment page is linked to that, so.
And it states the reasons, I guess, like it talks about these programs and different.
There's a couple of videos out there, Jay, that why big ass law run type of thing.
Sure, and is there a, I guess when I was thinking about, is there a forum that other schools like go on there? And, you know, I'm thinking about like you have these career fairs, for instance, you know, where you go and you go through and you select your, you know, where you wanna go and why, you talk to people about why they wanna go there. Do we have anything like that in the area? And then, because I know they just had this for a CSA thing that I just did with this, this food co-op, where they went into this place and the different farmers, you know, from the different places talked about, well, why, why share, you know, food, share with me? And, you know, I think about this and I go, well, wouldn't that be nice to go into, if I'm looking at open enrollment kid or at least the options out there, to go into a night, the open enrollment night where, I don't know if that'd be beneficial or not, but at least, if we ran it as this district, I guess, I think that, and hopefully get that out there. Maybe people would come in and at least find out, well, why would I enroll my kid, you know?
Sure.
We did that.
Did you?
A couple of times where we had an open house.
Open houses where we invited.
Open house. Remember the first year was a horrible snowstorm.
Yeah, it was a horrible snowstorm, so.
Played nobody's game.
Had very good attendance.
But the second time, it's been a while since we've done something like that, but we've been pretty successful bringing kids in.
I got another question here. It says items not included at this time and it says two to one in eighth and fifth grades for Chromebooks. What is it now, what is our policy on it?
Eighth grade and fifth grade right now are at a one-to-one. So if we don't rotate, if we delay the rotation of Chromebooks, we couldn't make, this adjustment wouldn't save us any money. If we are able to do the Chromebook rotation, we could delay, we could switch those to a two-to-one. Is, you know, the question is how big an impact, you know, especially at eighth grade, the teachers have really embraced the one-to-one and have really taken, and I think fifth grade as well. They, they're using it and they're integrating it in their curriculum. I think this slows that down because they feel they don't have enough machines and, and machines that are at a premium.
Now, the machines in the eighth grade and fifth grade, the kids, they don't leave school, correct?
Eighth grade, no.
Eighth grade they do, they take them?
Yeah, fifth grade does not.
The other side too, that would be, it would reduce, it would be costing, but right now, scheduling testing, Xeris testing on our devices is difficult with the amount of devices we have. Reducing devices would, would make that fairly challenging, something. At the high school, we love having the BYOD, number of kids that bring to our devices. But as Brian has sent emails, we said the last few weeks, trying to schedule testing with our native devices is very difficult. So that would be the challenge, are reducing devices, is making sure we have enough devices.
Well, what I'm trying to figure out is, okay, there's six up there, technology delay, does, is that supersede?
Yeah, you can't do both. Reducing, well, you could, reducing the, reducing the two-to-one, we would actually, the idea is we would pull fifty percent of the eighth grade devices and defray some of the replacement. We would have to pay as much for replacement. So, you know, I mean, it's one, if you.
So the two, the 221,000 is replacing all third, fourth, fifth, sixth, and seventh grade Chromebooks. The eighth grade Chromebooks right now are relatively new. They're basically what you guys have right now. So those have a little bit of life left in them. So the, the, really the only way to save off that 221,000 would be to cut the fifth grade one-to-one into a two-to-one. Because the eighth grade ones really aren't up for rotation this year. They'll be up for rotation in another year or two.
So what are all the other grades? Are they two-to-one, fourth, fifth, sixth?
Yeah, they're, they're all two-to-one with older Chromebooks which we need to replace. Yeah, so the only one-to-ones are, are eighth grade, fifth grade, and nine through 12. But the nine through 12, they have the option to bring their own device. So what is it, like 60 or 40?
60%.
So 60% bring their own at the high school level. So that saves us quite a bit of money. The challenge with that is with the standardized testing now, we can only test on our devices. We can't test on the BYOD devices. So when that, those 60% of kids need to test, we have to basically steal devices from other schools to use for that week or whatever that they're testing. But, yeah, so that, that big one is really replacing the aging Samsung fleet that we have. The real cost savings there is either, is, would be really the, the fifth grade one-to-one, going to a two-to-one, the eighth grade I don't think we could do.
You would feel the, the save, the savings on the eighth grade wouldn't be until the three-year period or planning that rotation.
What is the, um, the, um, computer fee at the high school?
Seventy-five.
It is still seventy-five, same, okay. Were you emotion on this?
Well, I just.
This is just advisory.
Yeah.
Uh, the, you know, we're, we're trying to prioritize these things and everything. I mean, I want to make sure that the technology doesn't go faster than what the teachers are utilizing it.
Correct.
And I, I mean, I would.
And this is to kind of what we shared last meeting, nothing in this budget is new. It's our entire technology budget is replacing and maintaining what we currently have. Our fear is, is that those Samsung Chromebooks that we have in the younger grades, the 800 and two of them, I think, need to be replaced. Is that Google has them marked for end of life. And once Google puts them end of life, we can't update them anymore, which means our standardized tests won't work on them anymore. And that's a real concern. If we lose 802 devices from our testing environment, we're, I, it's really a time deep for that.
But can those be recycled down to the younger grades?
Well, they're, they're already, most of them are at the younger grades already. And the problem with it is that they can't get updated anymore. That the standardized testing isn't happening at the younger grades, you know, just as much as it is at the higher level grades. So we would still need a newer device down there so that they can continue to be upgraded. And then to your point, I think that we leaned up our devices pretty significantly last year. I think we had an overabundance of, an overabundance of devices. And at our last rotation last year, our budget was cut, what, like about 40, 50%? We leaned a ton of devices. So I think that we're at a pretty good utilization now. We're almost in some cases, I think we have not enough devices. But I think the utilization level is pretty good and that we're actually at a pretty good level. We're not, we don't have too much like we did before.
Generally, I think Keith mentioned before, we've actually made our heads a few times to think about how we could reduce our budget and still find that $220,000. Something that we've done is, you know, we've looking at, you know, alternative devices that will be a little bit cheaper, but trying to figure out, you know, kind of total cost of ownership and a lot of other things. We're, we're looking at a lot of other things to see if we can reduce that number without disrupting the device rotation. Because, um, that testing animal is, is, we have to stay on top of that. Because if we get behind on that, that's really going to impact.
So the 221,000, that would be for all the Chromebooks for third grade, fourth grade, seventh grade, and sixth grade?
Third through seventh, fifth included.
Fifth grade too.
Yeah. Right now, the Lenovo's that you guys have are the device at eighth grade and the high school.
So then the, the fifth grade would be new computers or new, um, uh, devices just like these?
Right. Right, well, right now, we're obtaining a lot of, not necessarily Lenovo's because there's some cheaper Chromebooks.
What are they using then, one-on-one now in fifth grade?
The one-on-one for the eighth grade and the high school is those. The, the younger grades, we actually go with a, a Samsung. And to be, to be honest, um, we can go with something a little less rugged because they're not going home, they're in parts. So that's why we're looking at, we're working with vendors right now, trying to find a less rugged option that we still feel from a total cost of ownership makes sense. I mean, sometimes you get what you pay for. So we want to make sure that we're, we're talking to other schools that have gone with that kind of, not, not to say lower line, but a cheaper model where we've been purchasing and talking to them about what kind of support and purchasing they get.
So you said they're marked for end of life, but last meeting you said they may extend it a year?
We don't know. This is really the first Google educational Chromebook that's going to come on end of life.
So.
We, we.
What's their timetable, do you know?
Well, it's, I think it's October 2016. So that's the unfortunate part is it doesn't fall, you know, like during the summer. So we won't know until we get closer to that time. And then if we kind of, uh, we wait too long, it's going to be a problem. And we're going to end up buying 800 devices in the middle of the school year.
Uh-huh.
You know, I, we just, we don't know. We don't know if they're going to extend it or not. And, and I guess the upside too is if we kind of get rid of these Samsungs before that, we might be able to get some resale value out of them too. Whereas if they do go end of life, then I don't think we're going to get much for them. We might not get much for them now, but we'll get less.
So when you say end of life, all you mean is that they're not supported?
Yes, yeah, so the, the operating system that runs on those, like on your Windows computer, you know what runs Windows on these? They run Chrome OS, it's called. And once it hits that end of life, Google is saying there's the possibility that we will not update Chrome OS anymore on there, which means any security updates, things like that. The testing usually requires a certain level of that operating system. So, you know, if they stop supporting it, let's say version 48 and the test required version 51, then we can't run the test. So, and it's, it's harder because we don't know if it's going to go through or not. But you, you kind of have to act like that's the date that they're not going to support it anymore. And granted, they are.
Wonder if they got 802 letters? Can you please let me know if my computer's going to?
Well, that, that is the other thing is that some of those Samsungs are on year five. And they're not a rugged machine. Their, their batteries are lasting less and less. It's, it's, they're, we're going to, even if we would.
Well, can you help catch up to us?
Extend them a year or two, I would feel very concerned about the value we're going to have out of them anyways. I think we'd get a similar situation we were with the Chromebooks in their last year. Or Netbooks, sorry, Netbooks, Chromebooks. We had a bunch of machines that just had slow runtime, slow things like that.
You may have said this, but what's the reason why they can't take the standardized test on the take-home ones?
It requires a lockdown browser, a managed browser. You, you can both app-based, but then it would re, it would require us to have certain qualifications on those devices. And like we have 600 kids that bring their own device, to have teachers try to troubleshoot what version of Java or whether or not it's working antivirus, it would, it would just be a nightmare.
Yeah, like at the high school, the BYOD isn't necessarily just Chromebooks. It could be someone could have an iPad, a Surface tablet, a Mac. So it'd be really changing to kind of get everyone on the same page there.
And right now with the Chromebooks, we can do a lockdown browser so that testing window pops up. The kids have nothing but that, if they try to click off, it doesn't work. It, it's security, testing security-wise, it's, it's our best option.
Well, I just want to make sure, I guess, when we, you know, we're utilizing, you know, it's, there have, we have to have a balancing act, I believe, between technology and, you know, good old writing it by hand and reading it in a book and stuff too. But it'd be nice if our, our book manufacturers would go electronic to help justify that balance.
Can I just ask one more question?
Sure.
What have they got, the number nine and number 13? Why you have it broken down and just so we can lock one off?
Yeah, so instead of a 1% increase on salary across the board, if we, if we reduce that a half a percent on number nine, we would save $100,000 approximately if we gave a half percent increase instead of the 1%. And then number 13 is, would be if we had no salary basing.
You're taking the other half out?
Okay.
I, I gotta just ask another question because people ask me all the time, you know, have we ever thought, I mean, not once have I seen an item in here for cutting co-curriculars at all, at all?
We've, a couple of times we've had in there a 10% cutting co-curriculars. The problem is it, you're banging.
It doesn't do much.
It doesn't do much. Plus that is a way that we keep students engaged and keep the, it, it really pulls in kids and keeps them engaged some kids. And I think we, yeah, enrollment wise, we, we lose some things. We try to manage that.
Yeah, but is there some classes that we aren't as utilized as some of the other ones and stuff? But you're not cutting that much out of it, I understand that.
Yeah.
It's just such a small silver mark in the entire budget. You're not going to realize a lot of dollars.
Well, if it's reducing teachers or reducing co-curriculars, sometimes we might have to make that decision, I guess. You know, I, um, you know, it's, it's education, we're here to educate the kids, you know, and not entertain them to, to some degree. I mean, not that I don't want to give them opportunities. I'm, I'm just saying that that's the number one thing that I hear is, well, I don't be looking at that at all.
And there's, there's not a lot of buck for the bang that you get there and what you lose as far as student engagement or commitment.
Okay. Anything else, anybody?
I think the tough one that I've brought up, and it's always been shot down, but it never shows up, is maybe a 3.5 class teaching at the high school. So three and a half blocks. And I know not everyone would be able to do that, but it gets tougher and tougher. And I'm not sure if that was considered full-time, three and a half.
So then.
It's not a popular thing, but.
Half of the year, a high school teacher would not have a prep period.
He'd have half of a prep, he'd have half, 45 minutes instead of 90.
We added skinnies across the board.
I don't know. I think you have to get inventive somewhere. And I know there's always been a discrepancy from prep time through our district. And now that we have skinnies, that could open up that debate. And since I don't have to be here next month to hear the fallout of that comment, I may as well. I've made that comment before and it's, I've been told it can't happen. But when I look at what's on the chalkboard block, it's, I don't know.
I think there's a little bit of a misread on the amount of prep time, high school versus the other. When we look at minutes in front of a student, a high school teacher compared to a middle school teacher, they're fairly close. It, what happens is the elementary, their minutes in front of students is, is similar as well. It's just a different animal in what we call prep time and, and when it happens, if it's outside of the day or while students are there. And that, so, so I think high school teachers have a little more time during the school day without students. But they have a longer day. So I think when we, we looked at minutes of instruction last year, if you remember, and tried to, to compare elementary to middle to high school. And I was surprised because I, I was under that same impression that there was less minutes during the day for a high school teacher. But when we did, we did the math, they were, they were much closer than I thought.
Okay.
Also for 45 minutes for two terms during our prep period, we have a duty. So that is another part that's not necessarily included in our.
I'm sorry for.
We have a duty. So like right now, the entire third term during my prep period, I have students in my room for what's called Alec Alternative Learning Education Center.
So two of the four terms, you've, you're already to that three and a half? So you're like, half the time you're already at three and a half?
Well, only for one term.
Supervision.
It's a supervisory, yeah. But, but we still, you know, have that time where we're with students.
Gotcha. So was that taken into account when you looked at?
It wasn't because we have supervision requirements for all, at all levels. You know, at the middle school, you'll see before school, after school, they're out there working the traffic or they're in, in the hallways doing, you got all kinds. So at every level, they have those supervision requirements as well. So we tried to stick to classroom time instructing because that's really why we're paying them the amount we're paying them and try to compare instruction to instruction.
I know it's not popular, I'm just trying to think of something else.
And Jenny, isn't Sarah fifteenth year? We've sat here and cut our budget.
Perhaps, yes.
I, I have never had a year, but we've said, hey, we could, we could add to our budget. Let's do it.
No, we can't.
Well, but I want to say that we have added things like the project lead the way thing. So it, it, you know, previous, a previous issue says, the superintendent said, we have plenty of money. We have a $30 million budget. We just have to figure out how we're going to spend it. And so I don't want anyone to go away thinking we're not adding important things. We make choices and do those. So we end up with larger cuts from year to year because we've added things of value. And that's how you get things like that, project lead the way and, and the one-to-one computer programs and things like that.
It's how you want to cut the pie.
Yep.
Very, exactly.
Okay. Good to go the way it's at right now? Do you know?
Okay. So just to kind of summarize this, then what we will do in, in April, you'll see a similar report. But then we'll also have a report with staffing and talk about where we have changes and if we have any layoffs. Like I said, I would anticipate some partial layoffs, not a huge number, but a couple. And those are all tough decisions and it's not fun for you, it's not fun for us.
So you wouldn't anticipate them sticking or, or you don't know, it all depends on?
I don't know what you're saying.
Well, you, you said we would have partial layoffs.
Yes, we'll have some.
So are those possible, recall to come back then also?
It's possible, but usually once we set our number of sections, unless we see a large swing in students, you know, we, we try not to make a change. We don't make the change after the school year starts at elementary. For example, we're not going to add a first grade class and uproot 20 kids from one class, from four classes and add a fifth. So usually, once we try to lock in our staffing, we try to lock it in and try to lock those reductions in so people know what's happening.
Okay. This special, special classes, them, them were fayed art and?
Fayed art, world language, music.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, go on to Keith, Board Superintendent Communications.
One last, thank you.
You're welcome. You're just pushing it. That sermon's going to come out if we have.
Okay. Future board meeting and topics, the next board meeting is scheduled for Monday, April 25th, which is a long time from now. Good luck to the candidates that are on the next ballot.
Hopefully Mickey Mouse doesn't win.
Yeah. I need to motion to adjourn.
So will.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.